Stand one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
You ready for the roll call?
Uh, well Fran is here, if you want.
Whenever you say go, I'll go.
Here's Fran, you can go to roll call.
Okay, uh, Mayor Morandi?
Here.
Uh, Trustee Early?
Here.
Trustee Miller, not yet. Trustee Murphy?
Here.
Trustee Delgado?
Here.
Here comes Len.
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Okay, we have gathered here tonight for the wonderful public hearing for the tentative budget. So that starts for now, um, we can keep it open until at least seven thirty or before we close. See if any questions or if anyone's in the audience that has a question now, we can open it. So anyone feel free to, if you have any questions, um, I guess we can, we can move ahead with our...
Okay, I have a question.
How do public hearings work? Is everyone did that on public hearings when it's for public and then there's the board? When are the questions, are questions asked on the board during a public hearing? If it's public?
Um, I don't know, I think, I think there's really any formal, just it's public and it has to be open. Because sometimes board meetings are in public but not open to the public. Should have to allow time if anybody has questions to ask.
Okay. Just for public.
People can submit stuff after the meeting, so it depends on how long you want to keep it open.
Okay.
You can keep it open for a few days before you close it.
Right, yeah.
I think it's five days max.
I was kidding, Maureen. I know you had a kidding point.
On page three, Michelle.
Nothing to be careful about, Mr. Mayor.
The dam principal is increased by, the number's gotta be wrong.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Okay, on, on page three, water fund budget.
Oh, okay.
Second bullet, the dam principal is increased to, this is increased by...
Oh, yes, that number's definitely wrong. Fifty thousand, um, three hundred.
Okay.
We have a question from an audience member.
Is the tax levy increased two point seven percent or two? I was a bit confused by that.
Um, it's two point seven. What happens is the state has the two percent cap. The state also allows an increase if you have a growth in taxable values in your properties. So the ta, the state sets a taxable growth number and then they set the inflation number. So that's two percent plus.
Okay, so there was some taxable growth there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
And Mike, I think I wrote a summary sentence on page two about the taxable growth.
I'm just, probably not quite awake yet.
Wonder why.
Yeah.
And this goes with the, with the flat sewer fund, um, the flat rate is flat in this budget. We're going to be discussing that at a public hearing later.
This budget here assumes the ten dollar increase. And if it's not approved, or I will take it back out. But because we were talking about it, I wanted to do the tentative budget with it, because we knew about it.
So this includes...
We don't have to adopt the budget towards the end of April. Um, but I thought that if we're gonna be talking about the ten dollars, that would be fair to illustrate it in the tentative budget.
Tuesday, four thirty, to adopt it.
It has to be adopted, I guess.
Should be.
So the plan is to put it on the agenda, um, for the fourth Tuesday. Um, I don't know what the fourth, the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth for the public hearing for the sewer. The public hearing for the sewer is the twenty-fourth.
Is the twenty-fourth, then the option of the budget will be on the twenty-fourth.
So we can't keep that open. Can't keep that public hearing open. If it's been, if it's factored into this budget, you can't keep the sewer tax rate, uh, public hearing open.
Right, that's right.
It has to be closed.
The only other option is if you want to call a special meeting, a five minute special meeting on, say, the twenty-sixth. To just to adopt the budget, if you wanted to.
Okay.
But that meeting would be purely, come in, we adopt and that's it. It wouldn't be really open for discussion, we'd make whatever changes prior to that day. If we, if the village doesn't move forward with adopting the ten dollars a quarter, um, the only changes to the budget, the sewer fund would be, I have to keep that bond payment in there. It would just have to end up coming out of fund balance.
Right, right.
But the bottom line numbers would stay pretty much the same.
We made an assumption in, when we discussed last time, that we were going to start the ball rolling to buy either the police vehicle or the highway vehicle. If neither one of those gets done this year, is that gonna affect us at all?
No. Um, this factors in a payment for the two new vehicles. Um, by purchasing one before May thirty-first, it just takes a year off at the end.
I did, okay.
Well, I'm gonna move along and if people have questions or looking this while we're, we're doing this, or anyone comes in, we keep the, keep the public hearing open, but move on with the meeting. What's that? Yeah, we did.
Oh, sorry.
We did pledge, right? Who is on the plane?
Michelle.
I was doing you a favor. I was doing you a favor.
How's it going? Um, we have the police report. I guess you're up, Larry. You've got some, some cloud here.
Good evening, everybody.
Thanks, Eric, go ahead.
The month of March, we had fifty-seven calls. Most of those calls were due to the storm, and a lot of wires down, and a lot of, a lot of burglar alarms going off and other alarms of businesses because of the power outage. That kind of kept us running around for a few days with everything else. Summons wise, we had a hundred and twenty-six parker summonses issued, uh, and twenty, uh, moving violations issued. I'm sorry, yes, hundred and six, hundred and six parker summonses and twenty moving violation summonses for the month. We also had two arrests, one I'd like to commend, uh, one of my officers. On, uh, three seventeen, uh, St. Patrick's Day night, there was a call from the state police that would be on the lookout for a vehicle that was involved in a hit and run in Yonkers that sent somebody to the hospital. The individual, uh, the license plate came back to, they lived in Beacon. So Officer, Investigator Bjaruski was on duty that night. He was stationed out on, uh, nine D. He observed the vehicle traveling northbound with a bumper hanging off and two airbags deployed. And the gentleman trying to drive with his head out the window, pulled the vehicle over, uh, and that led to the, to the gentleman's arrest. He was the one from Yonkers, that was one on hit and run. So he did an excellent job that night. Uh, he was assisted by the county sheriffs, uh, with the DWI testing, which was Officer Chris Tompkins, who used to work here, um, and Officer, um, Rob Detwitz. They helped him out with all of the, the, um, burglar tests and stuff like that we did up at this substation, because we don't have that at the corner upstairs. So it was an excellent job by Investigator Bjaruski. That gentleman was arrested for DWI, um, second time in ten years, so he bumped it up to a felony if he gets convicted of it. Uh, he also was supposed to have a device on his car, so he had to breathe into it so he could start the vehicle. He did not have that, so that was a, another, that was a misdemeanor charge. Unlicensed operator, felony. Uh, he was driving around with no license and was suspended. Uh, and that was about it with that one. On the three thirty...
For reckless driving?
I'm sorry, oh, he got reckless driving, I'm sorry. Don't wanna throw the whole board on this. But, um, uh, the gentleman who lived in Beacon, that's where the address came back to. On three thirty eighteen, we had an incident in the village and also in Nelsonville of a certain individual knocking over mailboxes, throwing garbage cans, uh, eventually getting into the library, knocking down their drop box. Uh, that individual, uh, after investigations and after all the surveillance video we had, we got great surveillance pictures from our new surveillance outside. We also got it from Silver Spoon and a bunch of other, other businesses on the way to Main Street. They ID'd the individual, and he was placed under arrest by the sheriff's department. That was Investigator Piazza, did a great job on that, interviewed, interviewed people, uh, home residents, because evidently this young lad got all over the village that night. So he was, uh, subsequently charged with a felony for all the damage that he did. And I believe they will be arraigned in court on Wednesday.
So from hearsay, there was more than one person involved, how he's the only one charged?
As of, as the investigation went along, he was interviewed and stated it was just me. Uh, there was other individuals with him, but we have nothing of them doing any type of damage. It was pretty much him, uh, doing the whole thing, and he basically put it on himself and said it was all my fault. So unfortunately, the drop box is very expensive that he broke, uh, four thou, between thirty-five and four thousand dollars, which, because of that amount of loss, knocks it up to a felony charge. With that, everything else, the village is pretty quiet, I like to say. My office is doing, my board is not doing a good job, um, and that's about it.
Great, thank you. Recreation. Let's see, we've got, uh, this from Chair Bruce Campbell. Met on Tuesday, March twentieth, uh, met with Ethan Gunther. He's the student scout that is planning on building a nice bench for Tots Park towards his Eagle Scout requirement. He presented his plan and approved. Uh, met again with reps that previously presented plans for skate park. Updated information on all issues. They will continue working on plans toward an approval from village. Said results of discussion to the village board. Met with John Shearer as the requirements and using a new draft. Rec will review and village board to have by meeting on, uh, four-ten. Discuss recreation budget again for remainder of two thousand seventeen-eighteen fiscal year. Discuss budget for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget year. Met with reps that asked for permission to have a memorial service at Tots Park for Constance Bonas, Bonas. Uh, donation of a park bench and planting of a lilac near the bench, Miss Connie Memorial. Uh, wedding request at waterfront, more, more details to follow, and discussion on our vacancy, future park maintenance. Peter, we'll do years later, yeah, it's down in the, down in the, in the agenda a bit. If you want, here's a revised, if you'd like to take a look at this. This one has the right numbers on it, though. Did you give them the one with the right numbers? This one has, we had to adjust some of the numbers, which are more, are better for you.
Slightly.
Slightly, minimally better. Uh, let's see, uh, no planning board. We have a zoning board. Uh, let's see, uh, completed business, five Fair Street. Board approved the side yard setback variance to allow location, relocation of basement access so that the house can be expanded into the backyard. Nine Morris Avenue, Nine Morris Avenue LLC withdrew its application for a special permit to allow the operation of philanthropic, uh, whatever that says. Institution with the villages, in the villages, R-one, one family resident zoning. Current business, Sixth Church Street, the owner has been denied a building permit for a six-foot fence. ZVA expects an application for a variance. Uh, for Furnace Street, the owner has been denied a building permit for a six-foot fence. ZVA expects an application for the variance. Other business, one ninety-one main, inactive application for a new shed at the end of driveway on the property's Chestnut Street side requiring setback variances. Open seat, on April fifth, the board interviewed Eric Worth for the open seat on the board. With Wolf, Martin and McDonald present, the board voted unanimously to recommend Eric to be appointed to the ZVA. Is that on the agenda?
Yes.
That is, uh, from Eric Wolf, the chair for ZVA. Town of Phillips Town.
Good evening, everybody. A couple of items we had here. On March fifteenth of last month, we had a planning board held a workshop regarding the Hudson Highland Reserve. During that workshop, Steve Gadd, our town attorney, went through the secret process. He wanted to make everyone sure that it was on the board and everyone, the audience and the applicant to really understood how the secret process works. I gotta say, he did an excellent job explaining to everybody, it was a pretty long process, but he really made it, uh, easy for everyone to understand. He did that for two reasons. Again, to let the applicant really understand, but also to let the planning board members understand what they're really responsible for. So like, you know, we, then after that, we went into a, a public hearing of that as well. This was the last public hearing for the Hudson Highland Reserve. There's maybe seven or eight people got up and spoke, basically the same concerns, water management, wastewater management, how the horses are gonna be, how many horses are gonna be, there'll be any events up there, how the horse maneuver is gonna get offside and so forth like that. How's it gonna affect the town roads? If there's gonna be, you know, there's gonna be traffic coming out and in that Route nine. Is it gonna affect the schools? But he did talk about the schools, it should not affect, that's what he said. It really should only affect, maybe add ten kids to the schools, what they indicate. But you never know that until people move in and start adding kids, and it's tough for them to figure it out. Like, again, the hut, the land trusts indicated they will not hold the permit for that. Uh, so it was a very good chance. They said, oh, they did indicate it for first time, they would hold it if all the poor houses around the ponds were removed. That's their concern there, about the pond there and the houses around the pond. But they did indicate it too, that, you know, North Highlands recommended a few things up there as well. They did recommend that, that the houses, they're gonna put sprinkler systems in the house, which is up there, which is, which is a good thing. So it's one thing that, positive, one positive thing to remember. And this has got a long ways to go still. I mean, the public hearing will be closed, they're taking written comments up until, uh, April fifteenth. But I think at this next meeting, everything will be finalized, but I doubt they're gonna vote on it at the next meeting. I really don't think they will. Also, like, reported last month, that cell tower up on Vineyard Road, we were supposed to meet with, we got, we were being sued. We were supposed to meet with their attorneys last month, but with all the bad weather, then both times we had the meeting scheduled, it got snowed both those days. So we're meeting them tomorrow night for the first time finally, and see what they have to say about that. Also, on April fifth, April fifth of last week, we passed a firearms safe storage check here in town, in Phillips Town. Just so everyone's clear about this, it's pretty simple. You're out of the houses, you lock your guns, that's it. Simple, straightforward, easy to understand. It does not infringe on any of the Second Amendment whatsoever. Even, uh, DA Tandy wrote us a letter indicating that he was, was pleased with that law that we had, because originally, he was opposed to anything that we passed out there. So, so I, I think ninety-nine percent of the people are okay with that. Uh, I talked to many people and they seem to be okay with it. Okay? Also, I mentioned last month, we're in the final stages of re, the renovation plans for the town hall. Where Justin Kakers gave us the updated plans, now we're working on the bid package. So hopefully the bid package will go out within the next few weeks. And hopefully we're gonna, we have to put a plan in place of how we're gonna operate the town hall and do renovations at the same time. That's yet to be seen how we're gonna do that, but that's the overall plan. Uh, we're also researching the property of the Magazzino of Route nine. Uh, we're possibly looking to change that zoning up there. So this way, people can visit it without having a reservation, that people wanna drive by and walk up or drive here, they can have, right now, they're gonna take people reservations on. So if we change the zoning, we could, anyone can go there, it'd be open without having a reservation. Also, they may wanna change it to a museum possibly, so looking at that. One more thing, I'll look at, um, household hazard waste on May fifth over the county, up at the Canopus Lake Park up there. From nine to twelve, we'll be taking hazardous waste. The only, that's the only thing they're not taking is used oil, tires and stuff like that. But there's quite a bit of things like, they'll take, uh, antifreeze, sulfur like that, oil-based paints, stuff like that they'll be taking. So it'd probably be a good thing to take advantage of that, because it's only, it's only happens once a year. And a lot of those things are hard to get rid of.
What, what was the date again?
Sorry, Maureen. Uh, that's gonna be, uh, May fifth. Nine to twelve, up at Canopus Lake Beach, Beach, uh, Park Lot on three oh one. So all paint, stuff like that? Yep.
Is there a list?
Not water-based paint, oil-based. Yeah, the bad stuff. Yeah. Varnish and stuff. Yeah, varnish like that. Any household chemicals, you know, ammonia, any, anything like that, detergents, they'll be taken over, so.
Is there a list that you could, a list of stuff that...
I will send you that, yep.
Because I've got actually a few calls in the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, I have a PDF I can send you.
Great.
On the, uh, it was one, on the, um, on the renovations, I know that as a courtesy, we were asking for the plans for that, for windows and stuff for their, per HDRV, I don't know where that's at.
Well, you know, we only, we're only, only have like one set of plans right now that have been drawn up. So once we're to a hundred percent finalized, we'll get you a copy.
Okay.
I'm gonna give you something to have it to change and stuff.
What's that?
I don't wanna get a bunch of plans made up until they're a hundred percent finalized.
Right, okay. Well, at that point, then we don't, you know, what's our, is our input, can, there still be changes?
I'll see what...
I mean, if the exterior, we could have, kind of, and I think mostly probably interested in windows, I, I think. I know, I don't know if Al had contacted Richard or not.
Okay, well, I'll get, I'll ask him personally what my set of plans is.
And I, and I think there was a debate on whether that was...
Well, I understand the windows are gonna be exactly the same.
Right.
Except we're gonna add a window to the front.
So if you could, just check into that or see whatever, this is a courtesy. I know Al had asked me to ask. And also, congratulations on the, uh, the gun storage lock. I think that's a good thing and a nice job. I know there's a lot of heat involved in something like that and handled, you guys handled it so well, so.
Thank you.
Nice job. Um, historic district reviews, speaking of them. Ongoing projects, we continue to edit the design standards and look forward to presenting the much improved, more user-friendly document to the public later spring or early summer. We're preparing for and looking forward to the public hearing for March sixty-four on May first. Current applications, the spring and district owners are looking to spruce up rehab and love their building. A rear addition, uh, a rear addition is proposed at five Fair Street. Four Stone Street is, is, is will, will have a partial restoration of its primary facade and the owners of eight Furnace Street are exploring more windows and doors. We are workshopping with the owners of Hudson Hills to accommodate improved kitchen ventilation and Hudson House to accommodate accessible bathrooms. Their fence, uh, their fence applications for four Furnace Street and Sixth Church Street. But because both require variances, we will hear those applications after ZVA. Respectfully, Kathleen Foley. Great, I think you're up.
The code update committee?
Oh, sorry.
Again...
Sorry, Fire, do you have anything from Fire?
There's no report given.
No report, okay.
It's time.
Sorry. Go ahead. Code update, we have nothing from Tree Advisory.
No.
Again, due to inclement weather, the code update committee was only able to hold one regular meeting in March. The oral and written comments received from November twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, public meeting and responses were approved publication. An outline was produced on outdoor lighting standards and sent to the building inspector, the zoning board of appeals and the planning board for their input. An analysis of evaluating adopting original and protection overlay district was also produced and was sent to the village attorney for comment. Two items were identified for consideration of evaluate flooding standard. A conference call was conducted with NICE certified to review the new NICE certified contract and the materials required for NICE certified approval of phase two.
Although Tree Advisory Board doesn't have anything, um, it's a couple of tree items. One, just for anyone that's interested, the tree, the large tree that fell between B Street and Orchard went across the road, that is on, was on private property. Um, the, it was an emergency, the, uh, they came in and cut that and moved that off the road, off to the side, which is now on village property. So, um, we've been working with the owner and, uh, our, the village board will, I mean, not the village board, the highway will be, unless anyone wants to use a chainsaw. The, uh, highway department will be cutting it up and removing it at cost to the, to the owner. Uh, we've agreed on that. So it's kind of a win for him and for us, we can move that out of there. So, uh, we have the time to do that. So if anyone was wondering, I know there's some people that think that that was on, uh, village property. It's not, it's, uh, I measured it out and went to survey maps and it's on private property. So that's one. Uh, there are also trees, we've gotten a lot of trees that are right on property lines, which we have to work with surveys, which isn't the easiest. Um, Tom Campanile on Sixth Benedict had a, one tree that was down, it was on his property, but there's another that's dangerously leaning, um, it's kind of right on the line. So he's agreed to have that taken down as long as, uh, he doesn't have to do a stomach grind, which I agreed to, so he's going to remove that tree. And, uh, it'll be, uh, it'll be cut down to, down to grade. Um, but anyway, so thank you to those guys for working with us. That's all I have for them. Water and wastewater.
Well, I got one, I got a couple of picks. We did approve, uh, five hundred dollars for the Fourth of July, for the town, for the village?
Thank you.
Okay?
You'll be getting invites, hopefully you guys can, everyone will.
Oh, and one other item. I know the, the private road, Hamilton Street, and the other one, what's the name of that other one?
Benedict, or, uh, East Village.
I was misspoke when I said Carl was up to the greeter, I looked into that. It was such a long, it was, it seemed like it was almost yesterday. Anyway, the county did that many years ago.
Right.
It wasn't the town.
Right.
It was the county that did that. Check with Carl and make sure I'm straight on that, that, not the, not the town of Phillips Town, not the... Sorry, Tom.
Anytime you wanna give us something, I'll let you break it.
Greg?
All right, uh, we start with the water department report. Uh, the upper reservoir dam rehabilitation project. Uh, after our discussion with Tektonics representative last month, we are set to have preliminary conversations with neighboring property owners regarding access easements. Potential easements would be flagged, uh, by a survey crew. Tektonic would give us a day rate, that they would get out there and, and then basically that the, the lines, potential lines would be flagged with, uh, survey tape, so that if we had it on site, we wouldn't just be pointing saying we're coming in over there, would actually, you know, it would be a little more planning, they'd understand it a little bit better, so we felt that was a, a good way to go. So I know Bart just forwarded over some comments today that you'll, you'll get tomorrow.
Yeah.
Just saying, you know, as far as which ones potentially in which order, kind of thing, we could, could start off with.
Yeah, okay, right, yeah. Yeah, I just read it earlier.
Uh, and then, here's something new, discoloration in the distribution system. We have received several...
Where'd that come from, Greg?
You know, I'm not, I'm not really sure, I think it's water-related. Uh, we've received several complaints of discoloration at consumer taps in the past week. And I know, we kinda joke, but it's, it, we take it seriously, so anyone who thinks that we don't, it's, uh, we, we do. As I've mentioned previously, we've been waiting for overnight temperatures to cooperate so that there are no hazards caused by water freezing on road surfaces. As it looks now, we're planning to flush hydrants beginning on Sunday, April twenty-ninth at nine PM, which should be complete by the morning of Friday, May fourth. Uh, we're also looking to coordinate, because Butterfield is tying in their last leg of their water main, which ends with a, a new tap at Paulding Avenue. And so they're looking to get that last leg tied in, uh, and it also has to be flushed out. So I called and told them that we wanna coordinate it with, so it's the same week, so that we don't go ahead and clear it up and then have them open hydrant again and we got, we got more problems. So we're, they, they said that they'd be out, they should be able to do that. So again, uh, beginning the twenty-ninth of April and hopefully done by May fourth, Friday morning. That's on the water, let's see if we have any questions.
And then usually after that, there can be some disturbance, so people should be aware of that. Is that following days after a flush, is that...
Yeah, yeah, typically, I mean, we get the majority of it out and there's some residual for a day or two, but the majority, you know, getting it out. You know, hydro ton main should do over a thousand gallons a minute now, so we really get a lot of losses to the pipes. And that's what we rely on to scour out all of the sediment and buildup that's in there. So, yes. And we'll, we'll send that out as an email blast, it'll be in the papers, uh, you know, and get the information out as much as we can. Wastewater. Market Street pump station replacement. We met with King's Capital Construction personnel on site yesterday to determine a few last minute items, such as temporary, the temporary power configuration. Because they may be taking the main thing out, but flow's still gonna come down the street, so they've got a way to temporarily hook up a pump so that it's gonna handle the, the flow that does come down there still while they're working on the, the new station itself. So they were working some of those details out. I questioned why the initial schedule provided, which would put them on site last Tuesday, was not followed. Apparently this spring's unusual weather patterns put them behind on some other, completing other projects and that's, that's what they, they came up with. And it's, it's to be expected, we, I mean, this spring has been, uh, not very conducive to getting, uh, you know, outdoor projects, uh, keeping them on schedule. So our start was delayed. Their plan is to be on site this Thursday at four AM, so really before any traffic happens down there, so they can set their pattern out and claim the spaces they're going to claim, uh, and, and then get started at that point. So we're basically expecting, they're not gonna make April twenty-seventh. Uh, so we're expecting to see a... Uh, so we're expecting to see a, a change order request for a thirty-day time extension in the near future. We do have the opportunity to get additional paving done. We talked about getting a change order proposal from them for that horrendous section of Market Street as it comes into the train station, that is, those property. So, while they're down there doing the pavement restoration for the project scope, get a change order proposal from them to see what it would take to get the rest of that, you know, that road done. As well as upgrading some of the Campbell Avenue pump station. They're gonna have a tie-in for the, uh, our emergency generator at the Market Street station, where we wanna match it up with, with Campbell Avenue as well. Cause we've got one portable generator that we would trail in between both spots and power it. So, you know, the reasoning behind this is to say, if we were to push April twenty-seventh and put them, you know, really under the gun, we're not gonna be able to get the thought of any other work done. So, it's kind of in our best interest, we're not, in speaking with Michelle earlier, we're not losing any, there's no financial, uh, change in, in, you know, their granting thirty days to us, not to affect, you know, our money and how it's, shouldn't, shouldn't cost us anything, basically what we're talking about, anymore than it would've yesterday. So, as it comes through, I just, I just think it's worth taking a look at. So, wait on that, go for it.
So, they're starting this Thursday?
Be on site Thursday morning, yeah, yeah. Anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Thank you. Do we have any time for the, usually how long do we leave the public hearing open? I'll go through a couple, a couple of quick things and then once, if everyone agrees to it. Uh, report of both the building department.
I'm sorry, Dave, I didn't catch what you decided to do about opening, keeping the hearing open or closing it?
No, it's just, it's open. We had, no, this is mumbling.
Okay. Sorry.
Right. Uh, building, uh, report, um, building department report. Uh, new building permit, applications nine, building permits issued five. Uh, COs issued two and title search is completed five. HDRB referrals four and ZBA referrals one. For the month of March, there's a total collected of twelve hundred dollars. You wanna do the highway friend? Is Bugsy here? Is he? So, you're gonna pop out of one of those cans over there?
Give me one second here, folks, if you guys wanna keep talking about.
Uh, we can go to the justice. Skip one. Uh, justice report, submitted by Judge Costello. Fines forfeited, bail and civil penalties, uh, thirty-nine hundred seventy-two dollars and fifty cents. Parking tickets, three thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars. Civil fees, not, four hundred ninety, mandatory state surcharges, two thousand two hundred and fifty-one, for a total of nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Number of DWI's was one, number of speeds thirteen, number of defendants twenty-six, total number of charge thirty-one. Average charges defended, one point one nine, whatever that is. Needs more time, Bugs, we can do something else.
I'm good.
Okay.
Can you just pass those down? Both, both are for one person? What they are, are sales quote for the mechanical cart tipper for the back of a garbage truck, which David asked me to inquire about. The other one is also for the cans, which we have over here.
We get to keep those, right?
Yes. And here's something, I need to make copies of the colored ones. I'm not that far advanced yet.
I just left you half cents for coffee.
He charges me every time I use a colored coffee machine.
What this is, is what would be installed on the back of the garbage truck.
Right now, the garbage trucks, for everyone's information, or FYI, is, uh, that the garbage trucks are manually loaded, so every can, as we brought over, usually it takes two people to load and unload. We don't have, almost all the, like Royal and all the other, uh, companies have automatic lifters. One person rolls up, something like this, they just hook it on and it tips itself. So, this would, this would cut the amount of people we need on the back of the truck. We could maybe even use one guy, definitely two guys. Does that sum it up, kind of?
Yes.
So, I asked, so I asked Bugsy if he'd look into this and see what it would cost for that. Since we're in, in, since we're, uh, looking into.
Just the colors.
How to, how to save on garbage, and that was one thing that I thought we should look into.
We can choose different colors.
We can mix and match lids, they, they put a stamp on it. Do you have the copy of the monthly report? Can I hand it to you? Is that mine?
No.
Okay. It's just not yours to keep. Thank you. All right, um, basically, we had four snowstorms, about twenty-two inches worth of snow to plow, three smaller storms that require salting. We had a lot of wind damage with, uh, storms, a lot of tree removal, cleanup. Um, other than that, we've done multiple work on trucks, uh, mainly the salter. Um, a few of the plows needed repairing during the storm and stuff. Um, the whole, the whole salter was, had to be rebuilt, which came to, it's not in yet, but it came to about seven hundred and fifty dollars, um, which compared to a brand-new salter is about eight thousand dollars. Um, all this was done by Kenny Tremble, who I can't thank enough for a lot of the work he did during storms. Uh, other than that, new, uh, tire and rim for the Bobcat. I spoke with Carl about stump grinding, I'm gonna get back to him on that. I guess Jen was saying there's something like thirty-two stumps within the village that need to be ground up. So, we're gonna look into what's the best options to go about that. Let's see, um, I met with, uh, the companies for the cart tippers, as you see. And the only other thing is, what we're looking forward to do in the next month is get on top of, finish off the street sweeping, fill in the potholes, start getting the painting done. Um, we're working on the subway project. Um, tomorrow is the tree up on Main Street. Thursday, we're going to tackle Belvedere Street and Hamilton. Belvedere being the one that's gonna have the most work done to it. And hopefully, spring comes real soon and we'll be ready to go there.
Bugsy, somebody filled in the pothole at the, at the entrance to Hamilton. I had assumed it was you, was it?
No, it was not. So, somebody must've.
Mark White, yeah, Mark White. Filled holes and said. Yeah, Mark White had emailed me and said he, uh, was, had filled some holes, he had some time on his hands, had a machine and.
It looks great. How old is the salter?
How old is this salter? It's ten years old.
Bugsy, Main Street, um, from what I understand, Main Street is not ours to pave, is that correct? The county or the town or something or other?
Main Street is not ours to pave?
Didn't, didn't somebody tell us that recently?
My understanding that it is.
I thought it was, because we talked about, you know, like it, it's pretty much chewed up, especially in the middle and across, like, the crosswalks and stuff.
The crosswalk I had spoke to Dave about, and one thing I, uh, suggested was we have a grinder for sidewalks. Um, it does nice straight lines, I can easily grind out that existing sidewalk and redo it all completely.
You know, across the Main Street from, from ADA ramp to ADA ramp right outside here.
Yes.
It's pretty much chewed up.
Yeah, we could, we can grind that up and actually just pour, well, lay new, uh, blacktop in there and just paint the lines right over that. And that's something I could probably do within a day. Let the blacktop cool and then put the paint right on top of it.
If anything, it would be county, um, three oh one's a county road, but that ends at the, um, at Chestnut Morris Avenue. After that, the rest of Main Street is not a county road.
Yes, it's always, above the red light has always been the, the county or possibly the state, I'm not sure. I thought it was the county who always did it, the crosswalk.
Yeah, cause it's a county road, I believe.
Yes.
For some reason or other, I thought maybe Charlie had said that Main Street, I mean, he said there's not a lot of responsibility, but.
Are you talking painting or paving?
No, I'm talking paving.
Okay, paving, um, I've never been here when it's been done, so that's fifteen years now, so.
So, it isn't necessarily need of paving.
I know it's concrete underneath and it's at least nine inches thick, I know that, I've gone through that a few times.
Okay, just wondering.
The painting of the Main Street line, which I know has been a concern by some residents and I've spoken with Larry about it. I am calling to the state and trying to get them to, uh, feel obligated to paint it for us.
Maybe that's what was the painting along.
Yes, usually it's the state that paints Main Street because the double lines for us with the new painter is possible, but it might kinda, it goes by the contour of the road.
Gotcha.
So, um, I'm gonna try and make them feel obligated to paint it, seeing as we swept what is their, technically their state road along Chestnut and in front of the school, the tennis courts, because it just looked horrible and they never take care of it.
Now, the, the state repaved a portion of ninety from, uh, in front of the school. You can see the, um, the new blacktop in there. And in do, doing so, they re, they removed a portion of the crosswalk striping. So, when you speak with them, can you also ask them to address that which they did?
Is that the school crosswalk where Tommy Herring is posted?
Actually, two places, the one by the tennis court.
Courts.
That's, um, I, I don't know what they did, but they put in about two feet worth of blacktop on either side, uh, but where the fog line is. And then I think they also, um, removed some of the striping.
Crosswalk.
Striping, um, at the corner of Halbainan Craig Side.
Okay, yes, I'll speak with them about that.
That'd be great.
I have a couple of questions about the cart tipper.
Sure.
Um, do these cart tippers just, um, tip one bin at a time?
One bin at a time, yes.
Just one?
You could, you could put multiple, meaning two, on the back of the garbage truck. Um, whether they give you a discount on two of them going in, it's possible.
Oh, so you need two separate apparatus to do that?
If, if you wanted to, you could do two apparatus. Um, with one on the back, like Dave said, you could technically probably limit to one guy on the back of the garbage truck, but you are looking at at least eight hours to go through, um, the village. Um, the, the carts, like we have here, they offer two, which is a sixty-four gallon and a ninety-five gallon. Both are compatible with the tippers, they also make a smaller one at a forty-five gallon. You could.
And all of them work for any of the tippers?
What's that?
All of them.
They all work for those tippers. It's a universal setup. So, what you could do is, how you wanna give them out to them, if you chose to go this route, um, anybody who needed an extra one, they could get charged for. They could also get charged a rate for having extra garbage.
I see. How much do they cost, Bugsy?
It's right in there on the.
Fifty-five bucks, somewhere in there.
I think it's the.
You think one of those cans would be enough for most people?
It all depends.
Not a huge one, but that's a recycling one, that one's blue?
Uh, no, it's, these are just different colors they have to show. Um, you can get any color you want, you could go with a green bottom, a blue top, um, whichever you felt the need for. You can put the village's logo on them, also it's in there. Um, as far as this can here, you're probably looking at half the residents could use one of these and be fine each week. There are a fair amount of residents who would probably need two.
I see you're looking at me for that.
What's that?
I see you're looking at me for that.
No, yours is actually middle to a little, little higher than middle.
We recycle a lot.
Um, recycling would be the ultimate goal, to get more of that than garbage.
Could we use the same?
We're getting, we're getting charged now for recycling, right?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so are we.
It's on you.
Yeah, but that, you also, you know, that rate's gonna fuck, they told me it could fuck sweet every single month.
As it has been.
Yeah. They don't see it going down, put it that way.
Yeah.
Bugsy, if we had one can for a household and, and, you know, Monday is regular garbage and Friday is recycle, can we use the same can?
That means you gotta put your garbage in something else during the week.
You could use the same can, but practically, nobody would be able to do that.
Yeah, practical.
Like with my house, I have two adults and two kids who live there. I go through maybe one bag of garbage a week. Whereas in a week, I would fill this and have more. I have a lot of recycling, I really nitpick my recycling. My garbage is limited to organics go out in the compost pile. It's all avenues I'm hopefully looking to pursue in the coming future with the residents and just try and lower costs at any way we can.
Did you read that article about the compost?
Which one was that?
I don't know where I saw it, can't remember, I read a lot, but, uh, this company, if you can, uh, get started and they, they're going around collecting compostable materials.
Organics.
Yeah, is that the same company? And they're storing them and then people who wanna take them back can, otherwise they, they get rid of them in some way.
Yeah, they, uh, produce them into a compost and a mulch, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, I read that.
That's pretty cool.
It's, uh, it's very interesting, I'd actually like to sneak the guy.
In some way as well, you know, for somebody who wanted to go around, you know, collecting that stuff and selling the compost.
So, to further the discussion on, on the lifter, each household would, would need two bins.
Yes.
Theoretically, one for garbage and one for recycling. Um, and just looking at the, the numbers here, we're talking about another one hundred thousand dollars for two bins per household.
Is that what it would come to? See, I don't know how many, I can tell you how many garbage cans are out there. I can't tell you how many residences can claim to those garbage cans.
I have that number.
Okay.
It, uh, we're talking in the range of nine hundred, nine hundred and fifty.
Residents?
Residences and places of business that we currently pick up.
Okay.
As well as, um, nonprofits that we currently pick up.
Now, when you say residents, um, there's many places, um, where a building has four or five apartments. Are you considering those four and five or one? Um, there is no way in the world they would fit five apartments into one can.
No, I know.
I basically didn't wanna get into all the discussion of that. I wanted to get this information, you know, uh, actually, I didn't, like, you're gonna bring this, but I appreciate that. I just, it was something we can start looking at and, and maybe, you know, if we add up the numbers, see what we got and, uh, that might be one way to go. And maybe, maybe the savings is that, you know, right now, we're paying for people with five cans or four cans when we're only gonna be paying for one now, or maybe, you know, it's a way to streamline it. Um, the, the amount of money we're gonna save on having an additional person on the back of the truck, it also has to be considered. So, I mean, there's a lot more involved in it, I, so, so, just, you know, digest that info if you can and we'll, we'll.
Sorry about that, that was a little overeager.
Would you say it would take longer to do it this way than the guys on the back of the truck?
Absolutely.
It would take what?
It would take longer.
To do, using this?
Yes.
With two guys versus three? Or with one guy versus two? What do you mean?
The difference between two guys, three guys on the back of a truck, manually lifting, is a half hour's time difference, that's all it is. But the wear and tear on the body is tremendous.
Tremendous.
And the lift is slower, so you said, I knew you said it would take about eight hours.
It'll be a little slower, number one, and number two, when it dumps, it dumps straight into one spot. So, you could dump two or three cans before you would either have to reach in and push it to the sides or sweep the hopper.
It doesn't come in at the top?
It does come in at the top, but it'll only go so high.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, Bugs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll get these tomorrow.
I like them here, I think they should stay.
They're all yours.
This is parked tomorrow during the day, so.
What time's it start?
Uh, one o'clock.
Oh, I'll be up here and have them out.
So just FYI.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
No, that's it, thanks.
Thanks, take care.
I'd like to go back to the public hearings, anyone else have anything on that? I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on the tentative budget.
Second.
Um, do we need a roll call for that or no?
I don't think so.
No, all in favor?
Aye.
Right now that the public hearing's closed, did you have any questions as trustee? I thought you were gonna say something earlier.
No, no, you answered one question earlier, thank you.
Okay, just making sure.
You leaving us?
Yes.
Happy anniversary for what's left.
So you're in.
Uh, okay, um, any from the, uh, the board?
I have a couple of small things. One of which I wanted to, uh, first of all, I wanted to, I know she's not here, but I wanted to congratulate James Warwick, who is getting the Chamber of Commerce James G. Lovell Community Award this year. So that was announced and I wanted to congratulate her, I think she well deserves it, that's number one.
And where does that come from?
Chamber, Chamber of Commerce, last year Terry Lee, he got it, this year, uh, I think Nancy sponsors it.
Fran, what was the name of the award?
The James G. Lovell, L-O-V-E-L-L, Community Award. Also, Larry and I worked on, um, the Friday before Easter, the Friday, to, uh, put together a grant request for, uh, some AEDs because the Police Department is in urgent need of them, so we got those done. Uh, the grant request for the Independence Day celebrations that we should have known about, uh.
Last week, or two weeks ago.
Last week, two weeks ago, the, um, committee that was going to award that got snowed out that day, so, uh, will not let us know until.
I think it's the third week.
Sometime in May, so we don't know whether or not that went through.
No, it's in April, I think it's the third week, twenty seven.
I wanna say the twenty-fifth, Thor's, it's like for somebody's not.
You say AED?
AED, is that correct?
What's that?
AED, the, uh.
The FIB letters.
Oh.
FIB letters, yeah. Yes, they, they don't have any, well, they have one that sort of works, the two don't work.
We have one here now.
Oh, we do?
I, I, I retrieved, uh, three of them from P VAC, uh, they, they got them for me, they're, uh, demo models. They're half the price of a brand new one, uh, so I have to settle with, I've talked to Michelle and settled with, uh, P VAC on that. One is in the office and I have two upstairs that every officer will be bringing out and putting in, in the cars.
Yeah, I know, we used to have one in the office and I think you guys were short, Mary gave them to the police.
Yeah, she did.
And the fire company has, I think, three new ones as well.
I was on an old man soccer team, we had our own. Everybody the whole weekend, I went, cause, uh, for good reason.
Oh, you old man?
Yeah.
I just have one thing, uh, the bathrooms on Main are, are being worked on today, I think the faucets were in, I think, uh, Orwell, he was getting the faucets in. Um, the, he repaired the, uh, two toilets, so they're up, they're working now. Um, so hopefully, definitely by the end of the week, it will be back up and see how long that lasts, but. Putting some commercial faucets on, uh, which should be harder to destroy, but not impossible.
Sure people will try.
I guess I'm sure they will.
We'll see how they.
And, uh, I think that's all I have.
I got, um, the, a lift is being provided for free and they're gonna take the, uh, fire alarm down and we'll take it to the shop where they brought it last time and see if it's worth fixing again.
Thank you.
Any word on that wall, did you get the doctor?
I talked to him about it and the, it would just be a repair, to rebuild the entire thing, uh. He, he said that there's no footing under it, that it's just a berm of dirt against that wall, that's what's holding it up on the street side as well. And I looked at it, you can see it kinda raises up, he, he said it's very old.
So if you did take some of that down, would you have to put a footing or no, you know?
Well, you can't put a footing under something, it's already, yeah, so.
They what?
You can't put a footing under an existing.
Right.
Wall.
Yeah, no, no.
So the whole thing would have to come out.
Right, but if they did take.
He said if that berm wasn't there, it would have fallen down a long time ago, in his opinion.
On the outside?
Yeah, I guess, I guess it goes pretty deep in the ground and it's explained by the dirt.
Right.
Not to hold it in place, I guess. The one where the tree fell down between B and Orchard. Yeah, the section of the wall that knocked out, he said it would be a repair of, he didn't give me a price yet, but.
Right, okay.
But it's not a, it's not like, hey, we got a new wall.
Right.
It's more like, it's just kinda repaired.
Hanging on for the rest of it to fall.
Yes, exactly. But it would be an enormous expense to rebuild that whole thing.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, um, we'll go to, uh, new business docking application, Pride of the Hudson, uh, we have an application here from the rec department, dates on it, uh, costs. Anyone have any questions on that?
They're using the old form with the wrong price.
Yes, I sent them the new application, uh, we just got this yesterday. I sent them the new application, that puts it on the agenda, if we can at least conditionally approve the dates, let them know the dates are okay for buying, they agreed to.
Okay, and they understand what the prices are now?
Yes, it's all, it's all on the application.
Yeah, I see you've got the, it handed off.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to conditionally approve. I guess it'll be conditionally, or?
I think it's pending the, and we could table it.
All right, do you wanna table it? We can table it. Is there any dates are locked in, and when's the first date?
Where are they?
June, okay, why don't we just table it, get a, get a square away.
What's, what's the other one that usually comes in, is this gonna fail a bit?
C Street.
This is basically Fridays, okay, C Street, seven and some.
Yeah, this is Wednesdays and Fridays.
No conflict.
And these dates will lock in in case someone comes in this week and.
Was there a second on the motion to table it?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, second is, uh, reappointment of acting, uh, village justice, uh, Camille Linson through, uh, December thirty first, two thousand eighteen.
I'll make the motion to reappoint Camille Linson as acting justice until the end of the year, when we do our re- audit.
I'll second that discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's see. LeVera Bradley. Film shoot. Um, let's see.
I have to give you some details.
Okay, yes, good luck with that.
This was, um, they submitted this, well, they contacted us, uh, contacted me about three weeks ago, um, end of March, by email. I just got lost in the shuffle, it's, uh, it's actually early this week, said, hey, uh, we're on, so. I sent them the application that we've been using in the past, you just filled it out, it is a photo shoot for next week on Tuesday. It's gonna be at the Apothecary, um, there's like four or five stores, if you contact one, make sure whether they're gonna do interior or exterior. It'll be about forty some odd people, they'll have eight vehicles, it's just a one day thing.
So we don't have the application then?
That's, this is it.
How many vehicles?
Um, I believe I said, yeah, eight vehicles, and they're gonna range with, I gave them the list of the church, local churches to call regarding parking that they can't use the vehicle on the streets.
But they've identified that they're gonna be using High, they said, yes, general area of Cold Spring High Street.
I'm not sure where, I came up with High Street because on the email he sent me, he identified the Apothecary, the general store.
Down Main Street.
Yeah, um, Big Moon.
Okay. So maybe.
Yeah.
Solid.
They could update. And what are we charging them for that?
Fifteen hundred fifty, this is what we have passed in these.
Sorry, yeah, I see it, I, I didn't turn the page.
Which is the one with the fees then?
Question, are we gonna need another additional officer that day?
It's a twelve hour times slot, so.
So that's.
That's not one's shift, is it?
No, you know, you start charge.
Seven to seven, it says.
So that, they, they're expecting about forty people?
That's their crew size.
Forty people?
Forty, forty-five people. And this is a photo, there's no, um.
It says video too, it says commercial video, they put it next there.
Looks like they're doing still and video, yeah.
In the, in the, this should be greater than a fifteen.
Yeah.
Not less than, um, Jeff, and so we'll, we'll need to update our application from, they filled in the current.
Okay.
But the question is, will they need, um, will they need police?
Well, what do you think, Larry? Do you think with that many people kinda milling around, we should?
Yeah, because I mean, if I have one officer trying to help them with tra- traffic, whether it be vehicle, vehicle traffic or pedestrian traffic, and I get a call, it leaves my guy, you know, not doing what he needs to be done, guy. So, uh, I would definitely request with that number of people, additional officers be put on duty that day.
Second thing, now, the second page.
You're back.
Oh, it's on the back.
This should be.
Why is it the wrong price? I don't know.
It's not.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Oh, here it is.
And do we get the application fee too?
Excuse me?
Do we get the application fee for this?
No, they'll give us all the price.
Okay.
So I think we have to add the, uh, officer.
Yeah.
That's a rate.
So on the first page, do you need traffic, do you need traffic control police? They say no, we are thinking the answer to that is yes.
Yes.
So can you communicate that to them? And I think she would ask them to get in touch with you, Larry.
And is this for this Thursday or next, when is this?
The seventeenth.
It's Tuesday.
Can you get somebody back in?
Hopefully, I'll get a copy.
Okay.
One more or none.
Well, if that, if they're at the Apothecary there, anybody who lives on this side of town, not gonna be able to get to their house, they're gonna have to go through the apartments or Fordgate or some, or come down from the top or whatever.
Depending on what, what kind of video they're gonna be shooting, is this gonna be strictly for the sidewalk, I mean, instead of vehicles being parked somewhere else, I don't think they're gonna have bigger cameras putting on the sidewalk, kinda, do I have to block off the sidewalk?
They said handheld.
Definitely need a police officer.
Yeah, it said mostly handheld.
All right, yeah, one, one police officer additional to the, the regular on duty officer should, should cover your problem.
And that'll be an additional charge?
Yes.
Which we have in the, uh, the, our fee schedule, I believe. Okay. So, I'll move to, uh, approve, uh, this application with the addition of cost for, uh, police.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, let's consider Resolution ten, two thousand eighteen, setting a time and place for a public hearing on the proposed local law amending the Village of Cold Spring Code, Chapter sixty-four, reclaim historic district. Uh, whereas the Village Board seeks to update the Village Historic District Code, and whereas the Village Board wishes to set time and place for a public hearing to consider the adoption of amendments to Chapter sixty-four of the Village Code, now therefore be, therefore is hereby resolved that the Village Board hereby determines that it will be the lead agency with respect to the review of the proposed amended local law, the project, in accordance with New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, and Part six seventeen of the Regulations Implementing SECR. Uh, since there are no other agencies that have the authority to approve the project and let it be further resolved, the Village Board hereby classifies the action as type two action under SECR and let it be further resolved that the public hearing be held by the Village Board in order to receive comments and suggestions regarding the proposed amendments to the Village Code, Chapter sixty-four, on May first, two thousand eighteen, at seven PM at the Village Hall located at eighty-five Main Street, Cold Spring, New York. And it is further resolved that the Village Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause said, said public notice and said hearing to be given as provided by law. On a roll call, vote.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Veloto?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Mirandi?
Yes.
No, question, it's, I see it's changed to a type two, and this is from John?
Now, if I went through the SECR, the, the form and.
Okay.
Talking away to trauma and what determines what's up.
So when do we, when do we need the SECR, the SECR documentation completed relative to the public hearing?
Documentation will be completed tomorrow.
Okay.
I started working on it today.
Okay.
So I'll have it completed tomorrow and I could forward to the board and everyone wants to review it.
That'd be great, if we could see.
Okay, uh, next, uh, approval of the proposed craft beer festival. We've been working quite, quite a bit on this one, um, trying to, trying to get this right. Um, so we do have, I have been in touch with both Bruce, uh, Bruce, I and, or Bruce and Larry and I met, you know, to discuss this. We came up with the numbers here and what we needed, um, we fine tuned this with Michelle today on who can pay for what, so it was forty dollars. Officers, we can't charge that much, it's, so we averaged it at thirty-eight, so saved a couple dollars. Um, and also, the only other thing is we need, the event coordinator is still the same amount, which we can collect, but, um, we have to find someone via rec department or the Village Board can't act as a coordinator, because we're volunteers for the town, village, so that, that, that number's in there, but just to, you know, let you know that. Um, we also talked to John as far as the liability insurances we needed, um, and also Jeff, uh, talked to our insurance company to make sure, that was one of the requests John had, John first had for us, um, who, you know, said that we're fine, I believe, and, uh, so we can move ahead with it. Um, so I think everything's in here, I know this is short, I just got this together. Um, Bruce had said he came up with another application, which I couldn't quite understand, it didn't have any of the information down on it. So I wanted to clarify and use this as an addendum to your application, so, you know, exactly what the costs are and what, you know, and, you know, what, what's needed to move this ahead. So, everyone had it, wants to take a, a little bit of time to look at that. If you have any questions on that.
Uh, question number six, uh, do you wanna change that to the end of the day on the seventeenth? The sixteenth is the day of the event.
Seventeenth, we have an event down there.
Huh?
There's an event down there on the seventeenth.
Was it confirmed?
Well, they're gonna have to take them down or have it done in the morning.
Is that event confirmed to be at the main or on the?
I'm sorry, I said.
Right, I, I think it's for the pavilion, but we're not positive on that.
Okay, cause if it is on the pavilion, would the tents need to come down on the sixteenth?
They would, or it could be the more, I don't know what, I don't have, do you have the application for that, for that wedding, or could you pull that? That's a good question.
That's for the graduation.
It's a graduation party, so probably not, or it might be in the afternoon and if you had it down in the morning, so. That's one thing I forgot to work in there, sorry.
Yeah, you said it, I would think.
Who are you getting the tents from? Are they from Duran?
Possibly, I think so.
I thought they charged extra.
Take them down and.
Take them down on the weekend.
Oh, I'm sure they will, yeah.
I, the one time I've been involved with them.
I think, I mean, it makes sense that we were getting from there, since they're so local and they do big events like this, but, um, you know, it's.
And unless they're gonna use the field for playing ball, I think they could probably stay up, we can contact the, you know, I think it's Pat Millis, so I can talk to them, so.
Okay.
It might not be a problem, well, Jeff can pull that out, it might be just for.
I'll send him a free ticket.
What's that?
I'll send him a free ticket to the event.
I think it's a graduation party, so it depends, I guess, on how many kids he has or whatever.
Maybe they'll need the tents if it rains.
It might be a plus.
Yeah. Um, are, are, are the only tents that are gonna be there will be the tents put up by the tent company? Or will vendors be bringing their own?
No, we are providing tents, small tents for, like, ones that we can just retract and take.
Like ten by ten pop ups?
Yeah, I think they're like twenty by twenty, um, for like, um, food vendors.
I see, okay.
That, that ride by, by us and, you know, yeah, they retract, so.
Okay, and you plan to have tent weights on each way?
There's tents and everything.
Okay, cause really, down there, Gustawin can load those over.
Yeah, that's definitely.
Okay, I'll wait till, uh, we'll wait till Jeff gets back, but I just so we can clear that up, and then if you, you know, you agree to this, we can sign this and you guys can advertise. And I did do some, a little bit of research while I was at a, at a, at a bar in, uh, New Falls, on, uh, a good place to, to look into, uh, craft beer festivals.
Gilmore Otter?
No, we were at Bockus.
Otter's, that's our favorite party.
Bockus, I mean, they have, uh, they have a lot of craft beer, they have their own brewery there. But anyway, this, I mean, everything that you've talked about is in line with all of the, the other ones that I could see, as long as, as times go and the amount of times for actually drinking and.
It just says Mayor's Park.
So how many people?
Fifty.
Fifty people.
I'll follow up, whichever we can work it out. At the very least, we have to have the thing taken down. At the very least, we have to have the thing taken down, so. So, um, I think, did I give you a, a...
Yeah.
So if you wanna sign one, and, uh, I'll sign, or if you wanna wait a little bit, we're almost done, and we'll do it right after.
Do you want me to sign this one, or?
Uh, we have two we'll sign, I'll sign, I'm gonna keep one, so you can just wait and, oh. We'll finish up here, um, and, uh, anyway, on the, on the, uh, so, for the approval of the, uh, post-craft beer festival, I will make a motion to approve that.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, and good luck, you're gonna be a, uh, the future of all craft beers and festivals resting on your shoulder.
Okay, something is graduation.
It is graduation, yeah.
That is that day?
What day, the Sat- the Saturday?
Yeah.
Same day? That's probably, I don't know, as far as things are going to go.
Uh, next is, uh, authorized mayor to sign memorandum, understanding with B Q Energy. Steve, do you wanna?
Long thing to read.
Yeah.
Uh, it's just a memorating of understanding, that said, uh, this is the company that's gonna build the hydroelectric, uh, for lack of a better word, facility at the, at our water treatment plant, uh, and the waterfall to the side that, uh, not, doesn't actually go through the water treatment plant, it's gonna turn a turbine and create a certain amount of electricity. And, uh, uh, they need our commission to, to, to move forward on this, the M O U is just so they can explore the idea in more detail, and look into, like, uh, different power usages and things like that, uh, in the village, and, uh, figure out the best way for them to, to proceed.
Did, uh, did, did we ask them to change a few things they were looking at, and they did that?
They did. Yeah, well, it was stuff that Greg and, uh...
Greg and Bart?
Greg and Bart added, so they changed it, except for...
Okay. As long as it was reviewed by the...
Right, right, Jeff?
What's that?
I know, I checked it against Sean first, so I don't know.
And that's good with Sean's, okay, so if someone wanna make the motion?
Go, Steve.
Uh, I'd like to make the motion that we authorize Mayor Morandi to sign the M O U with B Q Energy.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Does anybody sign this one then?
There it is, official copy of this. Were you able to find that? You were able to find the, the documents with the changes and...
Thanks to Trustee Harley Self.
Okay.
Okay, uh, next is the approval of Eric Worth as member of zoning board of a field replaces, uh, Allison Anthony. Uh, last night Z B A interviewed Eric Worth for the open seat on the board. In addition to his qualification listed below, we thought it would be helpful to have a Main Street business owner on the board. Uh, the board, Wolf Martin McDonald, present, voted unanimously to recommend Eric Worth to appoint, uh, to be be appointed to Z B A. Please appoint him at the next opportunity, um, Eric, uh, Eric's letter of interest is below, uh, thank you, Aaron. Wolf. So, um, I would like, I'd make a motion to, we, uh, accept, uh, Eric Worth as a new member for the Z B A.
Second.
Second from Steve, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Eric. I talked from the film, I'm, good.
Sounds quick.
Good. Uh, you're up, Lynn.
Uh, we're actually not quite finished approving this yet.
What's that? What's that?
We have not finished auditing bills.
Okay, so, but, but wait a second. We need how much time, do we need, we can hang up, and, five minute recess.
Yeah, at least.
What's that? Yeah, you can, you can do that, but... Oh, well, next week we're having a special meeting, um, uh, for recognition of Joe Edder, who's, uh, hundredth birthday, doesn't come around often, uh, so, uh, so we're, we'll have a, a meeting, I think, I don't believe there'll be anything else on the agenda. If, if there is something that pops up, we might take care of it, but, um, everyone's welcome to come down to the meeting and, uh, wish Joe well, and, uh, celebrate his hundredth, we will have, uh, a few, you know, a little bit of beverage and, uh, and maybe some snacks.
What time is that?
What's that?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty, sorry.
Hey, I just got one idea, I know you, every year we have problems with the bathrooms here on Main Street, with the vandalism, and this and that, but... Would it be any, I know you're trying to get money for a chamber of commerce and stuff to, to try to maintain, and would it be possible to think about maybe having local merchants sponsor the bathroom each week or each month? And put a sign, say, hey, this restroom is sponsored by Silver Spoon, whoever, for a month, for, for maintenance, or something like that? See if they would be willing to do something like that?
That idea.
We, we can try it, but they haven't seemed to be too receptive, they've been shipping in a little bit of money to help, you know, take care of it.
Maybe month by month might be easier?
Yeah, I was just saying, well, you know, during the summer months, you're not gonna get anybody in the winter months to do it, of course. Summer months, it means get somebody, Willis and Willies, I'm sure he'd be, you know, depending how much you're looking to get.
We can look into that.
We'll look into that, just so they get free adverti- not free advertising, but the people using it, say, hey, it's being maintained by whatever this month or, you know.
What a better place to advertise in, than her bathroom?
Bathrooms are the best.
You go to line to get in there.
Yeah.
They're a necessity.
They're the ones you want on there.
We're doing that meeting, like that, for Joe.
Two of them.
That's, that's regular meeting thing.
Yeah.
We are, the, uh, we're waiting to, to finish signing bills, which didn't, didn't quite get done, so, uh, that's the, that's the whole look for now. I can, uh, sign this thing, I'll take, take care of this business. You have the other one, right?
Yes.
Do you need to get that?
See Larry, is the, um, person arrested for the vandalism, is it a minor or?
Closing the street, right?
Um, that is a English, it was on the fence, kinda, it was on the... Maybe we'll cover that at the court, is it Wednesday? Yeah, yeah, tomorrow. I wanna talk to you about something too, unrelated to any of that stuff, at some point, no rush.
Yes.
That was our close reaction last week, I don't think.
Just so you know, for nothing messes up.
Want any?
Sorry.
Friend of yours here?
Yeah, this, this is the Boston contingent, I hear.
I'm an Astros fan.
That's a new place though.
It's great.
Yeah, I just got, I was gonna try to get there today, and I did, so I will get there.
It's very nice.
Good.
I like it a lot.
It looks nice, I peek in the window.
Putting in a week or two.
Oh, great.
Hospital, it was very interesting, she's been the editor, she's been the editor for thirty-three years.
Well, similar to the current, in some ways?
Sitting on the town is twenty-five hundred people, and all, catch many, like, papers about ten thousand. Salt Town, ten thousand, but anyways, it's still weekly paper, uh, some more, but, different culture.
Send it over to me and let me... You'll take a picture of their mastets, so we can see it?
We do have, yeah, a picture of the mastets.
Being the diligent photojournalists, we are too.
It's been a paper since nineteen oh one. And Liberal Party, it's a small L, and the Labor Party, proper L.
That's how they do it in Britain, isn't it?
The Conservative Party is not Liberal in England.
But there's a Labor Party, and there's Labor and Conservatives. Oh, and did you see which way the toilet waters were?
I checked several, and they don't spill in any direction, it's just a rush of water from the front to the back.
That, I, I would like to read about.
Yeah.
I think, it's a shame you wasted that opportunity. I mentioned with all the beers you were sampling, we'd have ample opportunity.
The urinals are, the urinals are very different. Stainless steel, stainless steel trough.
I've seen those.
Even mind that in January, it was zero.
One of the coolest things was, I, uh, walking through this park, and there was an Indian family cooking, big barbecue, and, uh, I just stopped, and hey, that, really great, invited me to lunch with them, which I wasn't able to, but, they have these large, like, two burners, stainless steel, but this big, provided in the park, it's a barbecue, and the municipality provides the gas.
Wow, that's nice, 'cause in the States, many, uh, at least in New York State, a lot of the, the state and county parks will have barbecue stands, but you bring in charcoal.
It's April, so it was very...
It's April, and it's only the fourth inning.
Lot of little differences.
Trying to keep that window, or what are they doing?
Freezing.
Yeah, freezing.
I, I hear you, I hear you. Same way you are.
I think I know that by now.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Didn't seem right.
How much is that cart tipper?
Let's see all players with the...
There's three different estimates, between seventy-three hundred and...
Play it out, Sam.
Okay.
Yeah. Have all your weight in. They weren't thinking.
The bins. It's installed, so that's not bad.
Actually, what has to happen is it has to be delivered, the truck has to go to the...
Which the owners want to, 'cause you have to give up that.
The place that's selling, that's the tipper, they'll install them.
You can just keep writing this early.
Yes, yes, maybe, maybe we can get the judge to have that young lad who's duty service and pick up the garbage, until we get the tipper, so.
Well, what's, what's interesting is it takes longer to do it mechanically than it does by hand.
Yeah, because you gotta hook them up, that's one at a time, where the guys can pick up on each side and throw it in sometimes.
Yeah, they, they don't even...
And what amazes me is how much garbage box he says, some places have.
Not gonna forget that one.
I mean, I do, you know, we do maybe one tall kitchen bag a week, and then a whole bunch of shredded...
You're atypical.
And then a whole bunch of shredded paper, because that shreds everything, he gets his hands on it, and so...
Oh, we composted a lot of stuff, but there's still six people, and we make a lot of garbage, yeah.
When do you plan to approve the budget?
Um, the twenty-fourth?
Yeah, twenty-fourth.
Right now, it's the twenty-fourth, unless we call for a special meeting.
If I, I'm going out of time, I may not be here on the twenty-fourth. And I may not be here...
You gotta give us a little earlier.
Um, depends on, my, at this point, depends on whether you can get flights, so maybe leaving the twenty-fourth up to twenty-fifth, and then even come, either coming back on thirty or the first. You're good to go. You're good to go?
Hospital's processed.
All right. Uh, looks like I'm up. Send you an email, go with that. You're up. Uh, I move to approve batch number forty-five sixty of our bills, in the amount of eighteen thousand, seven hundred and five dollars and ninety-one cents.
I will second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anything from the audience? Yes?
Uh, I wanted to thank the village staff, especially, um, Jeff, Larry, and Greg Phillips. Uh, our move went very well, uh, to the new space, and, um, the vill- dealing with the village was actually very efficient.
We're always efficient.
Not surprising.
It is surprising.
Where is your location now?
Three Stone Street.
Ah, you went in there?
Thank you, good luck with the new space, good luck with it.
Thank you, cut the checks.
And if you walk, right next door, there's a little fence, and behind there, you can get tomatoes and all kinds of good stuff going there.
So I'm told.
It's amazing what you can do in that little space.
Uh, one thing I, I did wanna mention that we, that I think should be, um, a good friend, and like, a person that's been in the, in the, uh, in the, in the village and in the town, and, and her and her husband, uh, have put a lot into it, uh, Jean Marzola died, uh, this morning, and, uh, so, um, Jean, for those that don't know, uh, did a lot of work with Scholastic, and then, uh, did all the I Spy books, and that really took off, and, uh, they've really been a, a big part of the, uh, of the community, and, uh, Jean, one time president of the school board, and, uh, you know, Claudia, we all know what Claudia's done, so, it's a big loss, um, she was a great woman and, uh, good friend, so, uh, heart goes out to her and her family, and, uh, you know. Uh, hopefully, uh, I think the services are Friday, uh, between three and seven, and then, uh, on Saturday, there's a, uh, uh, funerals in St. Mary's, I'm not sure what time.
Three P M.
Three P M. Um, the other is, you know, another sad loss for a, uh, for, uh, one of our, our youth, uh, I, what is his name?
Casey.
Casey.
Casey, what's his last?
Del, or Del.
What is it?
Casey Gal.
Yeah, Casey Gal, who I believe is twenty-two, is it?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three years old, um, another, uh, you know, another, uh, drug-related, uh, death to one of our young people, so, again, hearts go out to that family, and, wow, I don't know what the proportions are for, uh, Cold Spring and the number of people we have, but it seems like one a year, and that seems way out of proportion, so, uh, hopefully something can be done, I don't know, it's, uh, people really try doing everything they can, and this is really a hideous, hideous addiction, and, uh, I'm not sure what can be done, but, uh, really terrible thing, so, anyway, sorry to end it on a horrible note, um, some great people, you know, and, uh, young and old, and, wow, so, you know, and that, and, uh, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second this.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.